Good evening, everyone. We'll call the public hearing in regular at the Council meeting of Tuesday, December the 12th, 2017, to order. At this time, I would invite council or anyone who wishes to participate to join our indication, all of our eligible leaders. This meeting is on the f-.
In thy faith. Please hold your left hand, Father. Thou art God and God's amen. Father, we thank you for this day that we've come together to assemble, to do the business of the city of Hartsville. Father, we thank you for all that were able to come out, and we praise your care on those that were not able to go. Father, as we go into this meeting, let our hearts be clear and our minds be clear, and let us do what is best for all residents and businesses of the city of Hartsville. These not only residents, but in my son's name, we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. At this time, Chair Larnes paying a motion to weigh in for reading of an approval of the minutes of November the 14th, 2017, record for the council meeting. Here's a special motion. Any discussion appearing in all in favor signify by saying aye. Close by nay. The ayes have, um, I'm gonna change the order of our presentations if I may, because we have to get someone in and out. Chief has an announcement about a retirement that you need to make?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one of our own getting ready to retire, which he's already retired. He's one of our K-9 units, E-D-A-R. And, uh, he's been with us, uh, with the department for eight years. And he's done a wonderful job. I'm very proud of him. You've seen him go. He's ready to keep going to work. He's, he's, he's like me. He's at that age where he needs to gear it up a little bit. If you were reading off to him, you'd let him know what's going on.
With great honor and recognition for your loyal and dedicated service to the Hartsville Police Department, we recognize you, K-9 E-D-A-R. Your service date, September 2009 to December 2017. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Yep, thank you all.
Thank you, E-D-A-R.
Ready to people nervous there, Chief, when I said retirement? You got up real quick. Okay, um, we are going to move into item A on the agenda, the certification of 2017 runoff election results. Madam Clerk.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As reported by the Director of the Darlington County Elections Administration, which is Mr. Howard Campbell, the following November 21st, 2017 official certified runoff election results are: Council District One votes cast for Anthony Gray in 47, for Trey Gammidge 69. And in that the legal time has expired, we had no protest. Mr. Gammidge has declared the winner for District One.
It is now time to swear to the end. Do you have any family here that is with you this evening?
I do. I've got my father, uncle, and aunt, cousin.
Now, this is the judge?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanna make sure our legal counsel's on the side. Would you please invite them up? We want to begin the ceremony. Martin, Seth, you're gonna swear to the end?
I will.
Okay.
All right, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified, that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state-
According to the Constitution of this state-
-to exercise the duties of the office-
To exercise the duties of the office-
-to which I've been elected-
To which I've been elected-
-and that I will-
And that I will-
-to the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability-
Discharge the duties thereof-
Discharge the duties thereof-
And preserve, protect, and defend-
And preserve, protect, and defend-
-the Constitution of this state and of the United States-
The Constitution of this state and the United States-
So help me God.
So help me God.
As council member of the municipality of Hartsville-
As council member of the municipality of Hartsville-
-I will equally, fairly, and impartially-
I will equally, fairly, and impartially-
-to the best of my ability and skill-
To the best of my ability and skill-
-exercise the trust proposed in me-
Exercise the trust proposed in me-
And I will use my best endeavors-
And I will use my best endeavors-
-to preserve the peace-
To preserve the peace-
And carry into effect-
And carry into effect-
According to the law-
According to the law-
-the purposes for which I've been elected-
The purposes for which I've been elected-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce your family while you're here?
Uh, yeah. They, um, this is my family. I didn't, I wasn't sure who I was gonna be able to make it down. Um, I'm not from, you know, I'm from Indiana, so my dad called me on, um, probably three, four days ago and told me that he was able to get a flight and, um, stay with my Aunt Cheryl and my Uncle Paxton and my cousin Paige, who live in Charlotte, so they were all able to make it down here. I texted that Aunt Cheryl a couple of weeks ago and she said, of course, she was gonna make it. So that definitely means a lot for my family to be here, to get to see, um, what kinda difference that we're making as a community here in Hartsville. They're a long way from home, but they know I'm safe here and have a community that's, um, proud to be here and serve everybody. So thank y'all for coming. I appreciate it.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, it is the order of the chair that Councilwoman Adelina Graham's tag be removed and retired. And it is also the order of the chair that our freshman member has now earned the right to move seats, and we would welcome our new freshman member to come and sit inside the chair. I promise I will not harass her. She gets her ups her.
Wear some hip nose.
I'm telling you, if I get out of hand, she takes pictures. It is some big shoes to fill. You got it, I'm moving your jacket. Anything that you would like to say before we begin?
I think it's important, first off, to give reverence and honor to God. Um, you know, all of my faith is in Him, and remember this would be possible without God being here. Of course, my family for making it down here, and my five siblings and my mother and the rest of my cousins that couldn't make it down here as well. Um, and then Adelina Graham, she served this community for 24 years. Um, she's been serving as long as I've been alive, and she's, she's literally as long as I've been alive. She was elected in 93 and I was born in 93. Um, and she, she held her hand out for me and showed me the rope. She gave me an hour-long tour of District One. Um, I think our average speed was about nine miles an hour. Right, right, right. And it was because we stopped at every building that was dilapidated, and she knew the last person that lived there, or she knew that they passed away, or she knew something about every member of that community. So it took a really long time for us to get through. So we, she invited me to church. Um, we spoke again at Jerusalem at the breakfast the other weekend. So I'm just thankful for all the support that's been in the community, both from the incumbent, who was a challenger and a fierce competitor, and won six times, um, being undefeated. Uh, and it's, it's a privilege, and it's a humbling privilege to be able to sit in the seat of here after a woman like that. So thank you to everybody.
Well, welcome. We're glad to have you. I can tell you that we've never been, um, more proud of the fact that you've honored and respected your opponent in the way that you did, and that, to Mrs. Graham's credit, that she escorted you around her district to introduce you to her constituents, of which she was trying to earn their vote for a seventh time. You, you were a class act, and you did every step of the way. So, um, I think it would also be a wonderful time to invite everyone. We're going to have a celebration honoring, uh, what is our, our longest-serving council member?
Right now.
Right now. Still got hopes for John. Not hopes that you're the longest that you're doing. So, uh, that, Madam Clerk, will you give us the details so that we can invite everyone?
Sure. Everyone's invited on Thursday, the 21st, from 5 to 7. We're having a reception for Miss Graham at the meeting at Lot Park. So everyone's invited. I'm sure she'll be happy to see you. And, um, she's not able to visit tonight. She's, um, not feeling well enough to come, but, um, she promised me she'd be there on the 21st.
Yeah, she, um, she's, uh, bless her heart. She had a tumble and, um, has not recovered from that. So certainly keep her in our prayers and hope that you'll come, and if you'd like to do something special for her, the list is growing. Um, so please, please feel free. She has certainly earned it, um, certainly earned it with her tenure. And we've got some things from council that we wanna do to kinda honor her as well. She had a tremendous passion for dilapidated housing, um, and a tremendous passion for the cemetery. So we're working to know new things. So welcome.
Thank you. Good to have you.
Madam?
The reason I asked you was the nine miles an hour riding or walking, because she can walk actually about 12 to 15.
I believe it. I've seen it too. I've seen it too.
Make no mistakes about that. Not, not slow at all.
I campaigned with, um, Miss Adelina and walked door to door in her district the very first time I ran. And I thought at first like she was getting to be old, because she would knock on the door and some kid would answer, and she'd just go rolling through the house, asking where their mother was or, or, you know, one of the relatives there. And at first, I thought that she was just kinda getting old and like didn't hear the kid, just was going in. And then I realized that was all strategy. She knew not to waste her time with the kid, that he was gonna say, "Mom's not here," whatever, and she just said, "Oh, how you didn't just walk right back?" She got what she needed. She was a fierce competitor.
For sure.
Okay, so, um, we will move on. Item D on the agenda, uh, the American Cancer Society Certificate of Appreciation. Do we, yes, ma'am, please come forward.
I am here. Uh, City Council and Mayor, my name's China Watson. I am the Community Manager for the American Cancer Society. And, um, my responsibility is to manage the volunteers who plan, organize, implement Relay for Life, which has been going on in Darlington County for 24 years. It makes you believe it's 24 years. Um, so the city has been allowing us to have the venue for free and the stage, and that's a huge, um, donation for us, because that gives us money that we can put towards our programs and services. So on behalf of the American Cancer Society, my senior manager, Ivan Schwartz, and all the volunteers who put the event together, I present a certificate to the city of Hartsville. And thank you for allowing us in being, being a supporter of the event.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate the fact that you came back. So I appreciate that.
I appreciate you inviting me to come out. What I would like to see is, um-
You hold that and smile, because they want a picture of you not me, for sure. All right.
What I would like to see is, um, um, the city of Hartsville to consider having a Relay for Life team in 2018.
Yeah.
I know since I've been community manager for the past four years, the city has not had a team. And I know you attended that team.
Well, so we-
You get them running around.
Some of us have been participating individually. My wife's been a survivor now for, um, going on four years. Four years, I believe. Um, and I, I used to take my girls out there, and I was accused of going because of the food.
Oh, that's a good reason.
It was such a neat event. Um, and I want to say it was the first year that was that by our little part. Such a neat event. You know, we will, we will work towards getting a team.
So in 2018, it's May 5th?
Yeah, it is.
It's May 5th, from, um, noon until 10:00 P.M. And we also have, we started having a cancer survivors brunch. We haven't decided on that date yet, but when we do, we'll, we'll, uh, make sure we know.
The captain of our fire team, um, is a cancer survivor, and he used to, um, back when it was 24 hours, he would lead his team, and he was, um, was an amazing guy, so.
We found that some team captains had stopped, some teams had stopped, but cancer hasn't stopped. Still.
Well, thank you. So she came last, uh, two, a couple of weeks back, and just happened in the office midday, and I said, "You gotta come back and get your picture in the papers."
I appreciate it.
So thank you for coming back. I guess I should give this to you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Um, item F on the agenda, recognition of new hires and promotions. Nobody? We good? Okay. Um, we will move into management update.
Nothing at this time.
Assistant manager, it's very nice to see you. Nothing at all?
Pro city manager.
Pro city manager. Who has landed in Columbia, we are now all safe. So, um, items on the consent agenda will be received as information only. Without objection, they stand approved. And we'll move into unfinished business. Public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4314. I'll ask the clerk if she will publish the ordinance, or did you prefer to, Madam?
I have a review. She's got a break.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4314, that ordinance amending and restating certain provisions of Chapter 58, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, to permit the consumption of alcoholic beverages in public spaces within a defined area and other matters related thereto.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title and presentation by the reading clerk. This time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4314, if you'd ride, state your name and address for the record. Come to the front, and please limit your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, obviously.
I'll make it quick.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Casey Hancock, and I live at 119 North Fifth Street, Apartment B, um, here in Hartsville, which is just, just over there. This is a, um, a really exciting opportunity. I, I live downtown, and I really enjoy it. I spend a lot of my time eating and entertaining myself downtown, and in doing that, I, I people watch a lot. And it's always been, it's been really fun over the last few years for me to see the growth in downtown Hartsville and the, um, the growth in the number of people and the diversity of people that are walking around enjoying themselves. Um, and what I call that is like downtown Hartsville is becoming a destination where you can have a night out downtown. Somebody says, "What are we gonna do tonight?" Well, let's go to downtown. And as our food and beverage, beverage options grow, that's become more and more of a reality, and I think that's really exciting, and I enjoy it. I love when our parking lots are full. That's a great thing for, in my opinion. And I see this as an awesome opportunity to really jump out in front in terms of forward thinking, being progressive, and, you know, none of our, our municipal competitors are doing this right now. And I just think that's awesome. It really helps create that, that sort of environment to have a good time. Um, and from a personal freedom standpoint, you know, you're given a responsible adult the right to make a decision and have them, you know, being responsible. And if they're just might want to act up, I, I don't doubt that it'll be the last time they do it. You know, that's never been a problem. There was a concern with something like this. Anyway, that's, uh, I've said enough. Um, I hope that you'll support this ordinance. I think this is a great opportunity for Hartsville in really creating, um, an environment downtown that people want to be in and want to enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody?
Hello, I'm Shelley Wilson. I live at 1123 Timely Drive. I work at Coker College, and I'd like to support my, um, to express my support of this ordinance. My role as the Director of Alumni Engagement involves planning events where our alumni come back to visit. Each February for homecoming, we organize a downtown bar crawl that is very popular. This ordinance would allow our alums to move freely about the area supporting multiple businesses. We promote all the hotels within walking distance of campus and support the bars and restaurants downtown. This ordinance would make a great impression and promote a safe, legal way to enjoy and experience all that Hartsville has to offer. In addition, I previously worked at Sunoco for five years as a corporate recruiter. I loved explaining to prospective employees how unique and progressive Hartsville is for a small, rural town. Allowing open containers within the specified area of this ordinance would truly be an impressive change that would set Hartsville apart and be another example of the creativity and progressiveness of Hartsville's leaders. I urge you to vote for this ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else still waiting to be voted on? Hearing that there are none, Chair Larnes, public hearing and entertaining motions for the, Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass on 4314?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Um, is there any discussion? Madam?
From my understanding, last meeting, uh, public areas, um, to be able to, uh, get that special, you get permitted to have a center.
Correct. Anything further? Hearing that in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay.
Nay.
We'll call for, call for show hands. You'll again vote, the ayes. Madam Clerk. The ordinance has passed. I just wanna make reference to, uh, Mr. Hancock. Appreciate you coming, and just wanna make sure that you realize that doesn't let you carry beer from your apartment to the venue.
Well, I'll be back for proposal changes.
Shelley? Bless you. Um, all right, so we'll move on. Thank you both for coming and taking the time to speak, by the way. Not enough people do that, next to shows that way. So moving into new business, Resolution 12 dash 17 dash 01, the moment of the evening that you've all been waiting for, an election of the mayor pro temp. Is there a motion for the resolution?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 17 01.
We're gonna stand, um, at recess for five minutes so we can say goodbye, 'cause I know I'm gonna get a bit hard.
Thank you.
No? I got one. My wife's calling. I don't know when I'm gonna be home. I just don't know. Oh, gee. Yeah, you're taking it out. Right.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry. You guys are all the more.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just gonna go to the bathroom. I'm sorry.
Feel like I'm looking at myself when I look out the audience and see you.
I was trying to hide what, well, I hide behind their lip.
All right, Madam Clerk. Get the mayor pro temp on your bad side early, or the new mayor pro temp. Okay, we stand back in open session. All right, Resolution 12-17-01, we have a motion and a second?
I have a second, sir.
We have a motion and a second. And, no, that actually bothers me too, but you just, next thing you hear is... I thought Johnny was going to let you, you know, make the motion, but boy, Johnny just rerolled all over that selection, you know, because it's big. So, is there any, are there any proposals or nominations from the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilman Johnny Andrews as the mayor pro temp.
Okay. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Gosh, boxing me in the corner, aren't you? Well, the nominations have come to a close, and right now, we will have a vote. All in favor of Councilman Johnny Andrews serving another term as our mayor pro temp? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Let the record reflect that the mayor pro temp, Johnny Andrews, has been unanimously elected by his peers again.
And I'd like to thank council for the confidence and work here today.
Well, all, so, all jokes aside, Donny, Johnny does a phenomenal job of filling in for the city a lot of times when all of us can't. So, thank you for doing that. We've never been happier that you're retired so we can put you in more things now. All right, so congratulations, sir. Item eight on the agenda, Resolution 12-17-02, approval of a bid award for a 12-lead ECG monitor defibrillator for the Hartsville Fire Department. Is there emotion on the resolution? Is there any discussion? Hearing that in all, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Resolution carries. First reading of ordinance 4317, if the clerk will publish.
An ordinance amending and restating certain provisions of Chapter 2, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, to clarify provisions regarding the swearing-in of elected officials of the city and other matters related thereto.
You've heard the reading by title and presentation by the clerk. This time, the chair will entertain any motions from the floor for approval of the first reading and waiving of the complete reading.
Most of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Madam.
For the clarity of the audience.
Yes, ma'am.
This will move a, a person that won elections to be sworn in the next month after the election.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. That's my understanding.
That's correct.
Because runoff and the period line lined up, I guess? Right. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. First reading of ordinance 4317 passes. Item 10 on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4318, if the clerk will publish.
To authorize the purchase of land at tax map parcel number 0560701065, located at 316 Reservoir Street, consisting of 083 acres plus a minus from Hayward Gaming.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title and presentation of the clerk. This time, the chair will entertain any motions to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance 4318.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Here, any discussion?
Yes.
Madam.
Mr. Mayor, was the formula, formula of calculation being used to determine the amount being paid for your property?
So, that was, that is declared by the property owner.
As to what it would accept.
Correct, yes. The, when we presented an offer initially, it was a factor of the tax value with the understanding that houses held greater value than land. Because if your tax value is $20,000 a year, home values 75, you obviously can't sell for 20. So, I think we use a factor of four and a half or five to calculate it in some instances, but not all. So, if it's uninhabitable, we didn't do that. If there was remediation, we didn't do that. But if there was a house where the family had to relocate, then we tried to, to use a fair market value to figure out the place and the cost for moving the family to another location, which was determined by them. But typically, when we looked at the values, we use a factor of the tax map value. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just want to have that beforehand.
So, these are actually options, and Martin can get you a copy of all the options. So, there is, there's, that was from our calculation to figure out how much we needed to acquire the land. But then, the realtor had to negotiate with the homeowner to see what they would sell for. So, it's, it's all over the place. Some, some commercial buildings we had got for $10,000, some homes we got for $70,000, things like that. So, if you would, if you don't, do you have those?
The options are in your package.
Yeah, and the tax man.
All right, so, yeah, look at the options because that's our...
But it does not tell me 4.5%.
No, 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 no. Yeah, that was, when we went to, to look at the value of the total property, to come up with, with a dollar figure for a grant to apply for, they had to figure out what the value was without, without appraising 50 parcels. So, that was, when we looked at like the value of our individual houses versus the tax value, we found that four or five generally worked to get us in the ballpark of market rate. But again, the individual homeowners negotiate that absent of that factor. That, those are two separate things. So, we use that for our spitball math to figure out, could we even afford to do the project?
What is eminent domain right now?
What is it?
What's the percentage?
Of eminent, for, for this? None.
No, not for this. I'm just asking, counsel. Just see now.
What the percentage for eminent domain, well, that, that again varies depending on what piece of property we're talking about or whether you're talking of exercising eminent domain.
All right.
Well, I'm confused by that question.
Because eminent domain, it, it varies, like you said, but we're up 4.5%, and I want to move on climb to 5, 6, 7. That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, if we would use eminent domain?
No, no.
I'm confused by that eminent question.
I was planning to...
Okay. Because, yeah, that...
But we didn't have, but like I said, I see everything that's in the package.
Right.
But there was, I just want to know whether form of calculation being used. And that was the first time I heard 4.5% and that's the profit on the negotiated price.
Yeah, so this is a traditional real estate exchange. We use the 4.5% on our side to try and figure out what a good value was. But the, the homeowners that agreed to sell, they sold at different rates for different reasons. But, yeah, eminent domain was not even a question.
Right. So, 4.5% does the first time I heard 4.5%. So, that's why I wanted that.
And that's not, I don't want to make it sound like every property if you multiply.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, so a lot of the, a lot of the value of the homes, people that we had to replace, we tried to figure out what a residence the same size, same square footage would cost in the available market today. So, that was a consideration as well. Okay, if there's nothing further on ordinance 4318, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. So, did everybody else vote on that? Does that hurt Johnny? Everybody's in favor or others, but we do have one, one dissenting vote. Okay. So, depending on the chair, the first reading of ordinance 4318 passes. Item 11 on the agenda is first reading of ordinance 4319, if the clerk will publish.
An ordinance to amend Hartsville City Code, Chapter Historic Preservation, Section 11-21, Design Review Guidelines for Cities Historic Districts, Subsection A, Cities Historic Districts, Subsection 1, Historic Properties by the addition of 100 and addition of 110, East Carolina Avenue, Tax Map Number 056060210A, a portion of the former Southern Candy Kitchen and Subsection B, General Criteria.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title and presentation by the clerk. This time, the chair will entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We pass ordinance 4319.
Second.
Is there any discussion on ordinance 4319?
I'm real pleased that Bailey Bill continues to, to roll through Hartsville, that historic property and giving a tax incentive to restore and revitalize those buildings.
Okay, anything further?
I just like to see the appraisal according to the linked description attached.
Is it on?
No.
I'll get that to you this night.
Thank you.
You know, you know what building we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so by second reading, Madam Clerk, if you'll make sure that that is attached. I don't know that we would include the appraisal.
Well, it's...
Do we have that?
It was presented to...
Planted?
Yes.
Okay, well, if it's public record, then please by all means include it. Okay.
I just think it would be best for us to know.
Sure.
Since you said it was attached, then I guess I'm looking at myself. I don't know what frame of reference.
Absolutely. Okay, if there's nothing further on ordinance 4319, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. Item 12 on our agenda is first reading of ordinance 4320, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to authorize the purchase of land at tax map parcel number 0561101008 and 0561101010, located at 313 Reservoir Street, and property on Cracker Avenue, Danny L. Byrne and David C. Byrne.
Okay, you've heard first reading of ordinance 4320, as presented by the clerk. This time, the chair will entertain any motions to adopt.
Make a motion. We adopt ordinance 4320.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that in all, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it. Item 13 on our agenda, first reading of ordinance 4321, if the clerk will publish.
An ordinance to authorize the purchase of land at tax map parcel number 0561101007 and 0561101006, located at 315 Chana Berry Drive, and property on corner of Visceral and Chana Berry from Charlotte G. Anderson.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title and presentation of the clerk. Chair will entertain any motions to adopt.
Make a motion. Adopt ordinance 4321.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that in all, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. First reading of ordinance 4321 passes. Item 14 on the agenda, first reading of ordinance 4322, clerk will publish.
An ordinance to authorize the purchase of land at tax map parcel number 0561101051, located at 311 Reservoir Street, from the estate of Linda D. Byrne.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title and presentation of the clerk. Chair will entertain any motions to adopt.
Make a motion. Pass ordinance 4322.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam.
No contract going down with me.
Attached?
The prices in the ordinance.
There, there is no contract yet.
Okay, just an authorization.
Just an authorization.
Clear estate.
It's, it's been ordered by Pravey, hasn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's in Pravey, but the Pravey Board of Intermediation is going on. It's got a PR representative to sign off of the document.
Okay. All right, is there anything further? Hearing that in all, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Ordinance 4322 passes first reading. The chair will entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Code Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-4-70, Paragraph A, Subparagraph 1 and 2, for the discussion of council committee appointments and vacancies on Architectural Review Board, Parks Committee, and PD Regional Transportation Authority Board, and for the receipt of legal advice involving matters protected by attorney-client privilege. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing that in all, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. So, ladies and gentlemen, before we adjourn to executive session, I just wanted to welcome back our former council member, Juana. It's great to have you back.
Thank you.
Anything that you wanted to tell us about or add or...
Well, I'm glad that there's been so much progression in Hartsville. I've been taking care of my mother for the last year. She's doing well. For those of you who have kept in contact, we thank you. But I'm ready to get back busy after taking care of her.
Good. Well, it's good to see you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming. We stand in executive session.